Next item of business, please.
Item three is special orders of the day. Three A is proclamation twenty twenty four dash zero two eight, recognizing Beloit Area Community Health Systems Incorporated for twenty five years of service.
Counselor Day, please.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We're going to be easy on you tonight. We have three proclamations. Okay, here we go. Official proclamation. Whereas Beloit Area Community Health Center, AKA Community Health Systems, Inc., was founded in nineteen ninety nine, operating clinics in Beloit and Darlington, Wisconsin, and whereas the Community Health Systems provided outpatient services onsite virtually and in the community, and whereas their knowledgeable, qualified, and caring employees offer a complete range of services, including primary medical care, pediatric services, chiropractic care, women's health services, dental services, psychiatry, behavior health, and alcohol drug programming, as well as community-based services. And whereas, Community Health Systems is an award-winning federally qualified health center offering affordable, exceptional, quality health care to those who are uninsured and underinsured, offering a sliding fee scale for those without health insurance. And whereas, Community Health Systems employees celebrate diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, keeping it at the forefront of everything they do and including it as an essential part of their mission and their goals. And whereas, Community Health Systems offers four onsite Spanish-speaking medical interpreters and has interpretation services available for other languages by request. And whereas, Community Health Systems is a valued community partner, participating in health, fairs, screening, and education programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beloit City Council does hereby congratulate Community Health Systems, Inc. on their twenty-fifth year of service to their clients in the greater Beloit area and thank the employees for their professional caring commitment to the medical care and support services available to our community. Dated twentieth day of May, twenty twenty four, Kevin Levy, City Council President.
Come on up.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank you all and thank the council for choosing to recognize Community Health Systems for the twenty-five years of service. I'm humbled and honored to be here today to receive this recognition on behalf of the hundred and or so medical, dental, behavioral health, and administrative staff that we have. I joined CHS in January of twenty twenty, and you guess what happened a couple of weeks later? My whole career has been with this pandemic. They've been an incredibly challenging four years, and we are, and it's no small statement to say that we were challenged professionally and personally across the board. But I've been privileged to work with some incredibly passionate and talented men and women who have the opportu- who have and who continue to meet the challenge head-on with a focus on improving health care for the whole community. The needs in our community continue to change and morph, and we continue to adapt our services to ensure that we are meeting them. In the last few years alone, we have added multiple services, including those that were referenced in the proclamation. We do this because we believe a healthy community is a productive one, and we do this because we want to have a positive impact on the individuals that we serve, and we do this because we truly care about improving public health. We've been through a lot in twenty-five years, and we remain grateful to the continued support of the entire Beloit community. And we remain committed to ensuring to that we provide excellent patient care, whether their needs are dental, medical, or behavioral. We feel as an FQHC, we play a critical role in ensuring that finances never become a barrier to seeking health care. And we will, while we will continue to confront new challenges, particularly post-COVID, we remain grateful to all our community partners for their support and recognition. Thank you again for bestowing this honor on us. It means the world to us all. Thank you very much.
And before you go, can we get your name?
Stephen Smith, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three B, please.
Item three B, proclamation twenty twenty four dash zero two nine, recognizing National Travel and Tourism Week.
Okay, here we go. Whereas, the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of Beloit's economy, development, and workforce. And whereas, travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of two point eight trillion, supporting fifteen million American jobs. And whereas, travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities such as Beloit and across the United States by generating eighty-nine billion in state and local tax revenue in twenty twenty-three to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. And whereas, travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, health care, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that power our economy, our nation, state, and Beloit. And whereas, the America's travel industry cannot be globally competitive without maximizing growth in leisure, business, and international inbound travelers, increasing travel to and within the United States drives our economy to a more prosperous future and connects America. And whereas, small businesses account for more than sixty percent of leisure and hospitality employment. And whereas, travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, fosters mutual understanding, and connects the nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Beloit hereby proclaims the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Beloit, Wisconsin, and urges the residents of Beloit to join us in recognizing the essential role the industry plays in our city. Presented the twentieth day of May, twenty twenty four, Kevin Levy, City Council President.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Celestino Ruffini, CEO of Visit Beloit. So proud to be here tonight to honor the travel and tourism industry. In the midst of our week of celebrations, on behalf of Visit Beloit, Inc. and Beloit Convention and Visor Bureau Charitable Foundation, the twenty-two board members, twenty staff, and four hundred fifty-plus tourism-related businesses in the four municipalities we serve, we thank you for honoring the work of our industry. This is, you know, a pretty important week. Well, every week is very important here in the city, but you know, this week is a little extra special from, you know, the leisure travel side. Literally across the street from, across the river from our office, the groundbreaking of Henry Dorbaker's is underway. Beloit's newest entertainment complex. Visit Beloit itself is in the midst of getting final pricing to complete our events venue that we started back in twenty twenty. Today, we kicked off a four-month process, four-month-plus process on what the future of Edwards Ice Arena looks like and sports tourism here in the community. And tomorrow, myself, some of the team, and Sean Alameen from the Downtown Beloit Association, we head to Wausau to make an announcement that the Wisconsin Downtown Action Council will bring their annual convention here to Beloit next year. So in general, a lot of big wins taking place this week. Glad to be a part of all of that and look forward to celebrating not only this week, but throughout the entire year, big wins in the travel and tourism space. Thank you much for your time.
Three C.
Item three C, proclamation twenty twenty four dash zero thirty, recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week.
Okay, last but not least, whereas Emergency Medical Services EMS is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, Emergency Medical Services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive maintenance, medicine, sorry. Lost my spot. Medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other outside hospital medical care providers. That's a big list. And whereas, members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether care, whether care or volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beloit recognizes the meaningful work that our emergency medical professionals of the City of Beloit Fire Department contribute to our community and do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four as Emergency Medical Services Week, honoring our past, foregoing our future, and encourages the community to observe this week and appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Presented the twentieth day of May twenty-four, Kevin Levy, President of Beloit City Council.
Good evening. My name's Todd Farley, one of the battalion chiefs. My responsibilities with the Beloit Fire Department is I am one of the shift commanders. I'm on duty today. And I'm also the EMS chief for the department. Chief Peace couldn't be here tonight because he is inspecting a ladder truck in Appleton, and so he had duties the other way. I will tell you that the men and women of the Beloit Fire Department, we're very proud to provide the service that we provide to this community. It's valuable. It's a community that deserves the best that they can get from their emergency services, and we're very proud to be doing that. This proclamation sums it up very well. EMS just cannot be done without all of the collaboration that we have with all of the entities on this sheet. And so I want to thank you very much on behalf of Beloit Fire Department for this proclamation. Thank you.
Item three D, introduction of newly hired or promoted employees.
Sure, thank you. I'll introduce Bill Frisbee, who can discuss the six new additions to our Public Works Department.
All right, I'm going to start with saying I've got my Public Works Week T-shirt on today because it is Public Works Week, so celebrating our employees, and I actually have seven new employees to introduce today. This list is kind of across our department, but everybody here has good experience relevant to their job, so it's a very, going to be a very seamless transition for these people. First, we have a new equipment operator in forestry, Andrew Browning. He came to us from the private sector doing very similar work. It's the first time our forestry crew has been fully staffed since like last September. We have two new equipment operator in parks. One is Edward Cunningham, and he ran his own landscaping business before coming to the city, and Dwayne Williams. And Dwayne was a seasonal for us last year. Then we have a new recreation supervisor, which is Riley Magnussen. He was recently promoted from the recreation coordinator position, and he has been with us for about fifteen months now. We have new director of water resources, and that's Scott Schneider. He's been with the city since two thousand and five as a project manager in engineering, and then he also works with community, yeah, community development also. So his skill set's going to be missed where he came from, but will be a very good addition to the water resources team. We have a new environmental technician, Ashley Broussard. She came to us from another community's water utility, and she was a chemist for them, and she will be working on the wastewater side with us, but her skills will transfer perfectly. And then, last but not least, Sean Stuck is a new solid waste collector for us, and he came to us also from a private solid waste hauling business. So, welcome to the new employees.
Item four.
Council President.
Yes.
Chief Farley will introduce the couple of fire employees that we have as well.
The firefighters that just joined the Beloit Fire Department actually started shift today. They just finished their three-week academy and have now started their shift work, which that education continues for a while during their orientation. Seth Roden is from the local area. He spent some time in California and then came to us through the hiring process. And then Angel Almanza is actually a Beloit native, along with all of his family members, all from here. We did the swearing-in ceremony this week at the fire station. It was enjoyable to have a large representation of the community here. So that's always nice. Angel is an EMT. He'll have to become a paramedic, and Seth is a paramedic. So he'll get going on the ambulance here very quickly.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item four, please.
Item four is public hearings. Four A, consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five one, authorizing an exception to the architectural review and landscape code for the property located at eight twenty-five Liberty Avenue.
This is the location of the former Roy School, where they recently had a groundbreaking for their new project. The Family Services is doing with residential and a daycare center and some community, community service uses. They are requesting an exception to the metal requirement. The Architecture Review and Landscape Code says that you can't have more than twenty-five percent of the exterior surface of any wall on a non-industrial building to be metal. And on some of the walls themselves, they are requesting the use of vertical metal siding panels. The architect had argued at Plan Commission that we should be looking at the full elevation and not the individual walls. Unfortunately, that's not what the ordinance currently says. So there's four criteria that must be met in order to grant exceptions. In staff's opinion, those have not been met or the hardship requirement. And so we believe that, as submitted, it should be denied because of that. I think the case was made at Plan Commission, what, why Plan Commission recommended approval is they felt that overall the way it looked and everything was attractive. And so I think it may be time for us to take a look at that ordinance and propose some modifications because I think, you know, the discussion with Plan Commission showed that, you know, the overall elevation might be the way to go. So I guess I'd put that forward before you tonight. But otherwise, as it stands, staff would still recommend denial of the exception.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. This time, I would like to open up the public hearing on item four A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Please step forward and state your name and...
Good evening. Joe Stottleman, twenty-four thirty-one Eastridge Road, Beloit, and President of Angus Young Associates. I don't have any organized comments, but I'm here to answer any questions. Julie did share with me that there might be a possibility of evaluating that ordinance, and if that changes the outcome of tonight, then we're more than willing to take the time to get that right. And that's acceptable if that's the process that you might want to take. So schedule-wise, that'll work well into our construction. It shouldn't impact us.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, at this time, I would close the public hearing and entertain a motion from council.
I move to suspend the hearing for a future date.
So just a point of clarification, when you're saying suspended rules, are you, are you...
I'm sorry, maybe a layover.
No problem.
Wrong word.
So just wanted to make sure we're there. There is a motion and a second to lay this item over. Is there any discussion at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor of laying this item over, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item four B, please.
Item four B, consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five zero, approving a planned unit development master land use plan amendment for the property located at six twenty-five Third Street.
I know, you've seen this a couple of times. So this is an amendment to the planned unit development master land use plan for the Henry Dorbaker Entertainment Venue at what I think is now six oh five Third Street, not six twenty-five. I think the Assessor's Office has officially given it an address. In November twenty twenty-three, you approved the PUD master land use plan. On December fourth, you approved the zoning map amendment from M two to PUD. The outdoor sign regulations explicitly prohibit flashing signs. However, similar to the approved roof sign, a flashing, a flashing sign can be allowed if approved as part of the PUD master land use plan. So what they're proposing is, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the, is this bowling pin, which would essentially flash back and forth. I don't know if it's truly flashing. There was that discussion at Plan Commission, but we're going to argue it's flashing. We do support this sign. I think it's a kind of a cool retro sign, and I don't think it will detract from, you know, you've, basically, it's not along a street. It's across the river. It's down the spine road. And so we, we don't think it's going to be a problem. Plan Commission reviewed it on April seventeenth and voted three one to recommend approval. I think the city, the former city engineer, Mike Flash, actually felt that it was just not good to approve a flashing sign. So he basically voted no. And so the amended condition is included in this resolution, which is before you tonight, which I'm trying to find. So basically, the change is all the other conditions, which is conditions one through four and six through twelve of the past resolution would remain in full force and effect. And five would be modified to read, a total of five signs, including a roof-mounted sign and one flashing sign are permitted as proposed in the PUD master land use plan. On-site signage cannot exceed one thousand four hundred and twenty square feet, and EVM signs are prohibited. Section thirty point oh seven, general design, construction, and maintenance standards will still apply. Because, and because the signs are, that the PUD guides in terms of the sign ordinance, this basically replaces, you know, basically the requirements that are in the sign code itself.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing on item four B. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item four B this evening? Please step forward. Give your name.
We know this guy.
I'm on a roll. Joe Stottleman, twenty-four thirty-one Eastridge Road, and President of Angus Young Associates, representing Henry Dorbaker's. And I think the discussion is, at the Plan Commission, and is still a fair one, is define flashing. I mean, if the two pins blink every second and a half, that's a pretty slow flash. As we all, you know, we all think of flashing being this. That's not what this is, right? It's only going to operate when the bar, when the restaurant or the bar is open. So it's not there all hours of the day or night. And so, and the last thing I just to talk about is the uniqueness of this building and the size and scale of this building and its location. There is not another building of this scale in the, in the city of Beloit. So we're not setting a precedent that you're going to have rampant blinking or flashing or rotating signs because the scale of this building and the artful treatment of this building is a part of the composition of that space and the revitalization of a, of an industrial area. So it adds to the atmosphere. It adds to the flavor of the town, and we see it as an addition of great value, not a deterrent in any way. Anybody's got any questions?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on item four B this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item four B this evening? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing on item four B and entertain a motion.
Move.
I still move.
Counselor Terrell, second by Counselor Blakely. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we, it's approved. Item five, please.
Item five is public comment.
We have reached the point on the agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer speaker to the staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form. Madam Clerk, were there any public comment forms submitted prior to the meeting?
No, there were not.
Are there any members of the public that did not sign up that wished to address the council this evening? Please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Hello again, council members. Lori Marshall, Beloit. In May twenty twenty-three, quite by chance, we noticed on the marquee of the Boys and Girls Club that there would be a meeting by an out-of-town developer, that they wanted to cram a multifamily housing development into our West Side Residential Neighborhood at sixteen forty-two Sixth Street. We also were notified the same way by the meeting and, or about the meeting in September of twenty twenty-three. We had no idea that backdoor dealing had been going on for almost a year by then. Forty to fifty people attended these meetings comprised of neighbors to the said field, some city staff, and some of you council members were also there. And some people who in no way would be affected by the development decided that we should abide by their opinionated wishes also. abide by their opinion, nated wishes also, contrary to the developers' claims of hundreds in attendance per their application for the three million dollars of tax money per TIP funding allocation. You all have a copy of that. Please see Community Engagement Section J five and J six, as I do not have time to read them to you. We also have a tape of the meetings, if you'd like to see exactly how many people were at the meetings. Note also the non-answers of H fourteen and H fifteen. There are no other communication channels with this company. Is this another non-truth stated, like the use of the Beloit, or Beloit as a reference? For Madison Youth Center, an application, they used Beloit as a reference dated seven thirteen twenty-three, even though they told us at the September meeting when confronted that they had never done any work in Beloit. I've supplied you guys with that before. How many more non-truths or lies have been told, and how are we all supposed to believe anything they say? According to their lease agreement with Jomago, which the city has a copy of, sixteen forty-two Sixth Street, Northern Star is responsible for mowing the grass and for snow removal. Neither has been done by them. Blatant disregard for the neighbors and the ordinances of the city of Beloit. I took a picture on Saturday of the Sixth Street lot with grass and weeds measuring forty-three inches tall. The surrounding neighbors' yards are nicely mowed and groomed. In case anyone is wondering, there is no no-mow-me sign posted on the property either. How can they be trusted with our hard-earned tax dollars, city, county, state, and federal? There are also two lawsuits, including a land dispute regarding this property, that are being totally ignored and denying us our due process. Anything we have said and pleaded to you all has fallen on deaf ears. Now you all seek to take our legal avenue away also. This development talk was hidden from us for almost a year, a fact we only found out by filing for you requests for the emails between the city officials and the developers. There has been no transparency, contrary to the claims of Northern Star Companies. We ask that you deny their application for the three million dollars of our tax dollars and twenty-three years of property tax deferral to destroy our own neighborhood. This application is full of bluster and reads at times like a timeshare brochure. See I one, site amenities, for example. There is an old saying, if you can't convince with facts, then baffle with BS.
Time.
We think that Northern Star Company, they are doing that with this application. Nothing but non-answers and half-truths. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Please come forward and state your city of residence for the record, please.
I did not sign anything prior to this meeting, but I would like to speak. I am Linda Kidd, sixteen sixty-six Sixth Street. And as Lori was stating, there is a lawsuit against this. I was, understand how you people can vote on this when there's a lawsuit against you? Please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted by email?
Yes, I have two.
Good evening. My name is Priscia Gustina, resident of Beloit, Wisconsin. I am currently unavailable to attend tonight's meeting, but wish to voice my opinion. I oppose the allocation of funds to Northern Star Companies for the sixteen forty-two Sixth Street Housing Development. Currently, there are two lawsuits filed regarding this land. Court case is two zero two-three C V zero zero one one zero one, Nancy Davis et al. versus the Joe Mago Company LLC, current owner of the sixteen forty-two Sixth Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. This case disputes the boundaries of the five point nine acres the Joe Mago Company LLC purchased not too long ago. The boundaries affect nine plaintiffs' properties in devastating ways, so the boundaries have to be determined in court since the plot drawing was around the early nineteen hundreds. The land has been vacant all these years, and residents surrounding it have maintained and claimed ownership on portions that the developer wants to build and encroach on. As just one example, a boundary cuts through the plaintiff's fenced yard where their family's above-ground pool is. There are other issues regarding the land use also. Court case two zero two-four C V zero 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 five one, Nancy Davis et al. versus the City of Beloit et al. This case disputes the city of Beloit. The city in twenty-twenty-four changed the zoning of the land from R one residential to accommodate the eighty-eight-unit multiplex apartments Northern Star Companies proposes to bill, to buy and build on. The city of Beloit also changed the future land map in twenty-twenty-four, which wasn't scheduled to change for a few more years. Besides these issues, the plaintiffs believe the city of Beloit has violated their own ordinances. If Northern Star Companies buys the sixteen forty-two Sixth Street property, the nine plaintiffs will file a suit against Northern Star Companies to prevent them from building on the land. The boundaries and land use have to be settled. You have four applicants for the funds the city of Beloit is providing. I strongly urge you to allocate the funds to other applicants that are not in court disputes. I feel the council would not do the citizens of Beloit justice in providing taxpayer money to Northern Star Companies under the current circumstances. Priscia Gustina, Beloit resident. Good evening, Beloit City Council. I am writing this email in opposition to granting funds to Northern Star Companies LLC for the apartment complexes at sixteen forty-two Sixth Street. There are two lawsuits in progress, and no funds should be granted until the litigations are resolved. By doing so, you are unethically disposing of government funds. There are six hundred acres of land on the east side of Beloit that this project can go instead of cramming it into a few acres of land within a residential neighborhood bringing hundreds of new people. This is a bad, bad idea. I also want to state my frustration with the entire process, as the citizens of this area, as well, community members of the city of Beloit went to all of these meetings for an entire year stating several reasons this was not a good location fit for this project. I am in complete disappointment in the city of Beloit, staff members, managers, and city council for not determining a location that would be fit and listen to their residents. They have broken city policies and ordinances to pave the way for their agenda on the west side of town in a residential neighborhood to favor a private developer. Changing the dynamics of a residential zone neighborhood is way more important than anyone's feelings. I will say I am grateful for the Planning Commission, as they recommended denial to change the zoning and PUD. They also stated that this project by Northern Star Companies LLC does not fit this area. The city council should have followed the Planning Commission's recommendations, in which they still have the chance to deny funds. Lastly, in my opinion, Northern Star Companies LLC is not an established real estate company, and in my opinion, has falsified information not only on one application, but several applications, including their most recent application to Beloit and WIDA for funds. Northern Star Companies LLC has apparently never put a shovel in the ground. Beloit is not a guinea pig and should be treated as such. My family has fifty years in real estate and rentals, and we can tell you this is not a good idea once soever. Now is not the time to test the waters with a newly established company in such a tiny residential area in which the land is still in dispute. If funds are granted to Northern Star Companies LLC and the land is purchased at sixteen forty-two Sixth Street by them, a lawsuit will be filed with this company. As a concerned citizen of Beloit, please do what's right and not allocate funds to Northern Star Companies LLC and allow this build at this location. Ty Gustina, Beloit resident.
Is that all, though?
That is all.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. Item six, please.
Item six is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Thank you. Would any council like anything removed from the Consent Agenda?
Yes, sir.
Counsel Blakely.
Um, I'd like item six D removed from consent.
Six D, Counsel Forback.
Uh, six C, please.
Thank you. Item six C and six D will be removed from the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda will now consist of items six A, six B, and six E. Is there a motion to approve that portion?
I so move.
Motion by Forback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terrell. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving that portion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion of the Consent Agenda passes. Item six C, please.
Six C, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-three, authorizing award of public works contract C two-four dash zero three, eighty slash one hundred East Grand Avenue Riverwalk Extension.
Yeah.
Uh, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources has ordered the building known as eighty and one hundred East Grand Avenue to be demolished and removed from the Rock River by twenty forty-two. With the proximity to the river, structural concerns and other logistics, the adjoining building, oh, sorry, the first one was eighty, the adjoining building is a hundred, will also need to be removed. With the buildings removed, a section of the dry land will be converted to a riverwalk, similar to other pathways along the Rock River. Four bids for this project were received, low bid being from RG Houston for five million one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, RG Houston is considered to be a responsible bidder. This bid was forty-six percent higher than the engineer's estimate of three million five hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, this was a very unique project and difficult for the engineers to estimate, and that's the, the big reason for the, the difference in price there. All four bids received were competitive, close to each other. But as everybody here knows, the project is being funded between grant funds and Hendrick's Development. On April fifteenth, council did approve a budget amendment that also added in five hundred thousand dollars of city funds to go towards the Riverwalk portion of the project. The city has also submitted a grant application amendment to try to get additional funds from the stewardship grant program. And so with that, Hendrick's Development has agreed to move forward with the project and pay the higher costs if we're not able to get the additional grant fundings. So the total project award would be for five million nine hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, with some of the additional money being set aside for change orders or extra work that comes up for unforeseen circumstances.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Forback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Dench. Any comments or discussion? Counsel Forback.
Well, in the words of my colleague, um, Counselor Day, this is a big deal. This is wonderful. Thank you. That's all.
It will look very nice when that building is gone and the new Riverwalk is there.
Yeah.
Any other questions, any comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six D, please.
Six D is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero six four, authorizing the city to apply for a small-dollar, big-impact grant from the American Association of Retired Persons of Wisconsin.
Yeah. In an effort to expand programming at Grinnell Hall, the city is seeking permission to apply for an AARP, small-dollar, big-impact grant. Uh, this one thousand dollar grant would be used for a program called Ukulele Up Beloit. Funds would be used to purchase sixteen ukuleles and provide twelve lessons for participants. Uh, Grinnell Hall currently works with Youth Unite, a local nonprofit, to offer drum and music lessons once per month. The grant would provide the opportunity for growth within the current partnership. Participants would receive a free ukulele and take lessons for six weeks. If possible, staff is seeking to have the, a performance by the class once their training concludes. Should the grant be awarded, the funding will increase the variety and number of programs available at Grinnell Hall, and the lessons will be taught by Youth Unite. Ukulele Up Beloit would be an opportunity to connect across multi-generational lines.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Blakely, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dench. Any comments?
I just want to make a quick comment. I think it's a super idea to bring more music into Beloit and to increase the program offerings at Grinnell Hall. And I know the musicians associated with Youth Unite. I know it'll be a quality series of lessons for people. Thank you, Bill.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second. All those in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item seven, please.
Item seven is licenses. Seven A is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero four eight, approving the renewal of alcohol beverage licenses for the period July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Motion by Terrell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Forback. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item seven B, please.
Seven B is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero five nine, approving an amendment to the Class B fermented malt beverage beer and Class B intoxicating liquor license for O G G Prairie Street LLC, doing business as Jerry's Barn Grill, located at twenty-seven forty-five Prairie Avenue, Gerardo Garcia agent.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Motion by Dench, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Forback. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Seven C, please.
Seven C, consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero six two, approving a new Class B fermented malt beverage beer and a reserved Class B intoxicating liquor license for Austin's Filling Station LLC, doing business as Austin's Filling Station, fourteen fourteen Cranston Road, Beloit, Austin Vance agent.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Motion by Terrell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Forback. Questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item eight, please.
Eight is ordinances. Eight A, consideration of ordinance number three eight three five, amending eighteen point zero two subsection fifteen subsection A D of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit, authorizing outdoor vending for an event hosted by State Line Family Young Men's Christian Association Incorporated, Y M C A, in Riverside Park.
Thank you. We did have a presentation on this before. This is before for a second reading. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Forback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dench. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Eight B, please.
Eight B, consideration of ordinance number three eight three seven, amending section eighteen point zero two subsection fifteen subsection A E of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit, authorizing outdoor vending for an event hosted by Rotary Club of Beloit Foundation Incorporated in Telfer Park.
Thank you, Bill.
Uh, city ordinance prohibits outdoor vending in city parks unless it's permitted by exception to an ordinance. Rotary Club of Beloit Foundation is requesting to host a Bags or Cornhole Tournament at Edwards Activity and Sports Center within Telfer Park on Saturday, June first, from eleven AM to four PM. They are requesting to sell beer and food at the event and are anticipating one hundred to three hundred attendees. The organizer is requesting to suspend the rules for a second reading, for an action to be taken tonight, just due to the timing of their event being June first. The event will be open to the public, and the Rotary Club will apply for the outdoor vendor permit through the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I so move.
Motion by Blakely, second by Terrell. Uh, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, now to the merits. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Forback, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Day. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, please.
Item nine is appointments. Nine A, city councilor committee appointments for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Anyone had an opportunity to review those, their motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Blakely, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dench. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Nine B, please.
Nine B is appointments.
Is there a motion to approve? Before we approve, could you read off the appointments, please?
Uh, the two appointments we have for the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, Amy Levy has been recommended from the school district, from the Equal Opportunities Commission, Patricia Zodi.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Um, pardon me. I, I have a question before we go on to that.
Do the question, they said we get a motion and a second to get it on the floor to discuss it. So I just need a motion first? So I just need a motion first?
I so move.
Motion by Terrell, second by Foreback. Counselor Blakely.
Um, my question is that these are, are two different, um, committees, and I misheard it. In fact, you said there were two appointments made to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee.
Sorry, I said there were two appointments, and then I read each of them separately.
Oh, you did?
That's what I meant.
Thank you.
The, the two committees were the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, Amy Levy from the school district. Equal Opportunities Commission was a second committee. Patricia Zodi was the recommendation for that committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item 10.
Item 10 is Councilor Activities and Upcoming Events.
Counselor Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 13th, um, there was a playground replacement public input session for four of our playgrounds in Beloit. This was held at the Beloit Public Library. Next on my list is the board of the Beloit Public Library, attended the State Line Literacies Graduation Program before our regular meeting last Wednesday. That was full of excitement and fun. The graduates were so happy, and their families and friends were thrilled. And finally, Beloit Historical Society held its annual meeting and dinner at the Lincoln Center last Friday. Presenters from NPR previewed the Beloit segment of Wisconsin hometown stories that is under production and will probably air in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Day.
I just wanted to say to everybody, you should come out to the Memorial Day Parade. President Levy is going to be joining us this year.
Wow.
So it is one of the funner events for the community. It's, it's great, especially when you're walking in the parade. You get to see all of the people that show up, and it is a lot. A lot of kids, a lot of families. So make sure you show up and see President Levy marching with the rest of the council.
Counselor Dench? Well, before we, before we go to Counselor Dench, you know, I gotta, I'll get him back later, but you know, he doesn't, I don't think you want to go down this road with Memorial Day parades, because we could really set him up like we did the first, first year. So with that, I'll turn over Counselor, uh, comments to Counselor Dench.
Okay, well, no comment on the Memorial Day Parade. I hope everyone has a safe time, though. Uh, I do want to just acknowledge that yesterday, Vets Roll took off for Washington DC for another trip, uh, taking some of America's best, that is, some of the veterans who have served their country over the years. This year, for me, it's personal. My brother Larry is along. Uh, he's a, a Vietnam veteran. Uh, I just want to say I'm proud of his service, and I'm proud that he was able to participate in Vets Roll finally.
Thank you. Counselor Foreback.
Well, on a little addendum to that, I was coming down to the meeting tonight and driving down Riverside Drive, and I'm telling you, all those flags, they're just stunning and striking. We're really lucky, you know, that volunteers have created this event, and I also have several friends, uh, whose husbands were able to go. And for the, having grown up in the 60s, the Vietnam vets that are able to go now, I, this is really moving in a myriad of ways for them, very special. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Terrell.
Uh, nothing to report, but I did want to welcome our civic students who are here, who came to see us work, so, you know, welcome to the, you know, welcome to the site.
The only comments that I have, I was able to, uh, Beloit Health Systems had a nice safety event on Sa- Saturday, um, full parking lot, full front yard, a lot of things going on. Compliments to everyone that participated. Also, our Beloit and, uh, Beloit Fire Department and Police Department were there as well, handing out trinkets to the children. So I think, uh, that was a great showing for Beloit as well. And just for, you know, Counselor Day's, uh, record, you know, I've been down here almost 20 years, and I think taking one or two years off of the parade, I think that's a good track record. I think that, I think that's a good track record that, you know, for 18 years, we, we, 18 years, I've been walking. So this year, he didn't mention that, he said, "Let's take a golf cart," since he's bragging about walking in the parade. Now he's signed up to, "I'm driving it all right." So, um, with that, we conclude Council Activities and Upcoming Events. Item 11, please.
11 is City Manager Presentation.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Item 12.
Item 12 is Reports from Boards and City Officers. 12A, Consideration of Resolution 2024-036, approving the 2024 to 2028 Long Range Financial Plan of the City of Beloit.
Eric Miller, please.
Good evening, council. Uh, so, a long-range financial plan for the general fund is simply a tool that municipalities use in order to forecast revenues and expenses, uh, based on known facts and some, uh, estimates. Uh, it helps prepare organizations, uh, seek out change, and identifies those opportunities. Uh, it also is not a budget. Uh, so anything that is in the plan, uh, we are not locked into, uh, any, for any future periods of time. Uh, it can be used a- as a way to identify future issues and help, uh, to plan to address those issues that are identified. Uh, the Long Range Financial Plan is designed to be a fluid document. Uh, it's designed to be updated on an annual basis. Um, at minimum, the document will be updated annually, uh, to more accurately reflect the, um, the current state and future projections. Uh, it's a five-year plan, with the first year being the 2024 approved budget, and the other four years are the 2025 through 2028, um, based on assumptions. Uh, so this is on your agenda for action tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on it. Uh, just simply put, though, um, it, it is a plan that looks at, uh, all of our revenues, all of our expenses, throughout all of the different types of, uh, rev- revenue categories that you might see in our annual budget document. Um, it also takes a look at what some projected expenses are in each of the different departments, again, based on certain assumptions that we know as of today. And that's why it's fluid, because every year, things change based on, um, current economic conditions, whether it be, um, the state, uh, biannual budget that gets approved. Um, as you know, we are heavily reliant on state shared revenue or state aids in general. So we have to wait until we see what those things are when the governor does end up signing, uh, the budget. So, um, again, I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the document.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.